Single business either.
All right, I'd like to call to order this planning and zoning meeting. The date is six twenty five, two zero twenty four, the time is six P M. Can I get a roll call, please?
Marmon.
Here.
Sarah Ritchie.
Here.
Al Ferris.
Here.
Carrie Worden.
Here.
Nancy Darling.
Lynn Stucker.
Jake Vice.
Here.
Justin Naif.
Here.
And Rich Piper.
Here.
Thank you. And then the first item on the agenda would be the approval of the agenda for June twenty fifth, two zero twenty four. Someone would like to make a motion on that?
We'll move.
And a second. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same signs. Okay, we'll move on to the minutes approval for the June eleventh, two zero twenty four meeting. If anyone would like to make a motion on that.
Make a motion to approve.
You in a second.
Second.
Thanks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. All right, we'll move on to public comment. This would be for anyone in the audience that is here to speak on an item that is not listed on our agenda. Do I have anyone in the audience here for that?
Well, I have a question. I didn't know. I don't know if it's appropriate or not to speak about the herb and chicken.
Oh, well, we will get to that item, but it's it's a little further down on the agenda. So, yeah, we will get there, though.
Not known.
All right. We don't have any currently have any old business. So our first item for new business would be item seven A. Consider recommendation on the Indianola Housing Study and Needs Assessment.
Yeah, and I'm going to introduce Abby Eckert. She's gonna come up and give a presentation. So she's with Confluence. Confluence has been working on our housing study now, gosh. How many months has it been?
Nine, maybe?
Credit.
A little over that?
Yeah, so we've been just feeding through some stuff. And there's a lot of content that we've been going through, a lot of stats that we've been digesting along the way. And they've been great. Helped through that with that. But I hand it off to her. She's going to give the presentation. Any questions that you have, we will try to take team and answer those.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. So tonight, really just outlining what we were tasked with within this project and the outline of the plan. Then walking through more of the kind of analysis portion of things. And in the report itself, there's a very thorough community profile section that I'm not quite covering in detail here today, but more so looking at the projections and the recommendations laid out in it. So with this project, we were tasked with eight separate kind of objectives within it. So looking more so at the future in the next five, ten, fifteen years. What does the housing market look like? What are we projecting that to be? Examining your existing housing stock characteristics, then looking a lot more into that kind of projecting side for housing needs indicators, more so from a unit, an acre, and a price point perspective. Within this project as well, we did cover a series of stakeholder engagement opportunities via stakeholder interviews that we held online, as well as our online interactive engagement website. So obviously, following your comprehensive plan, you guys know how valuable that public input is and kind of creating better understandings of what your current conditions are today. And then that final task, here we are with presenting to both yourselves in the city council here next week, actually. So with the plan outline, within the introduction, there's a lot of terminology, jargon, names, all sorts of things spread throughout the comprehensive, the housing study. I apologize. But obviously, I'm quite comfortable using and talking about, but we, the layperson trying to read this plan and understand what's going on in the next five, ten, fifteen years, wouldn't quite understand. So within that introduction, we have a definition sheet. So it's hopefully setting the stage and making things a little more approachable as people turn to this as a resource. As I mentioned, the community profile section is a very thorough demographics analysis, looking at everything from your current population, what your household composition is, household incomes, anything of that sort. Housing stock characteristics more so looks at the actual parcel by parcel analysis within the community today. So what you share of single family residential is medium density, high density, where those are located, where they're year built, what that kind of looks like, everything else. And so I'll cover that in a little more detail here in a few slides. Housing needs indicators compiles the community or community profile and the stock characteristics data to project into the next five, ten, and fifteen years to better estimate again, the units, the acres, and the price points within each of those. We did summarize the public input we received from the stakeholder reviews and the website before we moved into the strategies and recommendations that are really kind of setting the stage for actionable next steps. So then the housing stock characteristics, we look at the residential land by housing types. And this table that you see on the screen here today identifies that you have about just shy of five thousand residential parcels within Indianola here today. The majority of that share is single family residential. We do have some pretty small shares of medium density residential, which more so means just like your townhomes, your duplexes, triplexes, of the kind of smaller density scales there. Whereas multifamily is more so your apartments that you have located throughout the community. Manufactured and mobile homes are just shy of one percent, as well as assisted living and nursing homes. And I think these were more so important for us to categorize as an available housing type just for your aging populations and making sure that there are resources within Indianola that people can move into as they try to age throughout the community. Within this section as well, and on the next slide, I'll cover it, is our city and regional comparisons. So looking at what your housing stock currently is and how that compares to some neighboring communities of similar sizes, within the metro specifically. Again, most parcel mass specifically looking at single family residential, as well as multifamily residential. So everything from year built, total assessed values as identified from Warren County, your lot sizes, total living area, number of rooms, bathrooms, garages, basements, all sorts of really fun parcel data. Then we completed a vulnerability analysis that looks at a series of data points that I'll cover here in a few slides as well. So looking at your existing single family detached composition, those key characteristics in town today, we have kind of the minimum, the maximum. So seeing that your oldest home in town is that was built in eighteen forty nine. Whereas you know, it's one obviously being twenty twenty three from that newest parcel dataset that we have access to. The average year built being nineteen seventy one. And when we look at kind of those neighboring communities of Altoona, Pleasant Hill, and Bond Durant, your housing stock average is a little older than what we're seeing there, which I think to no surprise, especially given Altoona and Bond Durant's kind of growth trajectory in the last five-ish years. That's not too surprising for us to see, but seeing where that falls, especially as we start to look at assessed values, living areas, square footages and such like that across the board, where that kind of falls and what that could do momentum wise for you guys as you try to bring more housing online. Within the report itself, we tried to begin to make everything as graphically rich as possible so people would maybe be excited to learn about housing. So in this graphic here, again, just highlighting a lot of what the common characteristics are for houses in Indianola here today. So again, average year built being nineteen seventy one, total assessed value being just shy of about two hundred forty five thousand. Most being three bed, two bath, not surprising, given your average household size being more friendly towards half our families of that size. Just about fifteen hundred square feet, maybe having a fireplace, one garage, typically a one story house, maybe a porch on just shy of a half acre lot. So moving into the windshield survey, as I mentioned, we completed a vulnerability analysis. And what this does is consider a series of data points that could then creates a hotspot analysis. So the red color just means that a lot more of the parcels either hit the mark for being built prior to nineteen fifty, has a small lot size, has two or fewer bedrooms, one or fewer bathrooms, maybe no garage. The counting accessory condition for how they rate parcels is below normal. And it also has a total value of less than a hundred thousand dollars. Now, what these parcels are really showcasing is this is likely to be in most kind of concentrated area of your historic housing stock. Likely to have kind of the smaller, lesser home values that could be on the fringe of being on the cusp of becoming dilapidated of sorts, or maybe needing further attention for housing rehabilitation, different energy efficiency tactics, and so on. And so then we used that kind of outcome of the hotspot analysis there to complete a windshield survey within the community for that study area. And so what we did was we created a survey on our phone, went around and drove around this study area here and assessed each and every home within that study area based on their existing condition, their roof condition, and their housing type to better understand the real time characteristics of each of these and maybe identify if there's any key themes that need to come about from our recommendations, whether it be, again, if it's an exterior rehabilitation program within the community, anything of that sort, if it's a neighborhood kind of initiative, looking at those tactics there. To no surprise, the predominant housing type within this study area being single family residential. Some options and conversions for medium density, seeing some single family homes turn into duplexes and such. Very few kind of instances of multifamily residential here today. But the things from the exterior condition analysis and the roof condition analysis that I want to draw your attention to more so being the seventeen point six percent of those study results being in the minor rehabilitation category. So again, those are kind of on the fringe of if we don't start to maybe rehabilitate them now, fix them up now, they could fall farther into the deteriorating, dilapidated, or condemned property types there. And so having those more on the forefront and understanding where those are located, what we can do from a neighborhood standpoint, or community wide rehabilitation standpoint, or even infill, those being more so the focus within this windshield survey. So looking at public input, as I mentioned, we hosted a series of stakeholder interviews where we met with people virtually to really hear what their housing experiences have been, what they've heard from fellow residents, any guidance that they could provide to us of what the specific housing needs are from a type standpoint, from a price standpoint, and so on. We also had our interactive engagement website where we tried to spread the word, have people come online, participate in a survey, participate in image voting, and then an idea wall, which is more so kind of like a Pinterest board to showcase what kind of housing they might be interested in seeing in the community, engage that way. The image voting more so being, we looked at everything from single family residential to multifamily residential, trying to better gauge what housing types and housing characteristics people were leaning more towards to provide some further recommendation for developers that way. So from the swat analysis, which is strengths, weakness, opportunities, and threats, we identified that for the strengths in the community, the proximity to the metro is heavily undersold. I think there's a strong misconception of how close you guys truly are to the Des Moines metro, especially compared to other growing suburban communities such as Waki, Grimes, Ankeny, any of those. But that the quality of life that you guys have here in Indianola differs greatly from a lot of those other suburban communities. That's something that you guys can market and campaign to draw in new residents and build some momentum for redevelopment and residential standpoints there. Weaknesses wise, we're looking at some typographic challenges, just because of the rolling hills here, some of the geotechnical surveys that are required for development, those being some of the barriers that a lot of people are a little hesitant towards as they look to develop within the community. So finding some recommendations there to see if that might be something the city can take on from the forefront and alleviate that barrier or just recognize it. And so that developers kind of know what risks they're assuming within that parcel opportunity there. Another thing noted here was the apartment stock being a major obstacle for supporting young professionals coming to the community, identifying even just entry level housing, especially for single parents, seniors, and students alike. Opportunities, again, people were pretty open to any idea that we have more housing solutions, especially from a creative standpoint, those meaning more accessory dwelling units, which your code already allows, it's more so people just didn't know that they could do it. Looking at different opportunities for development types, more so being three D and concrete printed housing, which is kind of an up and coming trend of sorts, looking at preapproved residential designs, cottage style developments, really, people were open again to anything. More so, again, that marketing and education campaign so that people understood what programs are available, what housing resources are available, why they should choose Indianola, anything of that front. People were thinking those were good opportunities to at least spread awareness and knowledge throughout the community there, especially within the vulnerability analysis areas and some of the newer developments even as well. Energy efficiency was a concern, and how can we maybe promote that and support that from a program from the city? Threat wise, again, and this is, Indianola is not unique in this issue or concern, being the increased cost of construction throughout the community and the nation. The obstacle of attracting different developers to the community, what kind of the, again, it's the misconception of the commute from the core of the Des Moines metro to Indianola, people thinking that the twenty minute drive might be a bit too much for them, which I think is silly. But then again, the housing shrink, the housing stock today is shrinking because there hasn't been a lot more development occurring, but people are still seeing increased interest in moving to the community. So the availability is shrinking, but your vacancy continues to shrink as well. So kind of some things on that spectrum that aren't quite working together there. From the interactive engagement website, as I mentioned, we had a survey on there. So the first half of that looked more so at what the people participating in, what their existing housing story was, what their experience has been, and so on. So eighty percent of those survey respondents had lived in single family homes. Eighty-three percent said they would prefer to maintain their residency within a single family home. But if we asked them, what else would they be okay with, it was more so on the townhome option there. One thing that was interesting and stood out to us was that twenty percent of the respondents were actively looking for different homes within the community today, but just hadn't found the right fit quite yet. But again, looking at even their housing experience from a mortgage standpoint, sixty-one percent of those participants own their home with a mortgage, seventeen and a half without a mortgage. Some shares of renters there, but then a wide variety of different kind of housing compositions and experiences there. Or when we look at kind of tenure within the community, about forty-three percent have lived in the community for three to ten years, with another thirty-five percent having lived here for ten or ten plus years. When we ask people what kind of their top five priorities were when choosing a new home, infrastructure and utilities being available, or the top ones of safety, as well as safety, home being within their price range, different land amenities. So is it on the kind of size of lot that they would prefer? Does it have a nice view of the rolling hills of Warren County? What kind of landscaping is available? Land suitability, so then looking at like its flood risk, if it's on decent soils, really fun, exciting topics to look into if you consider purchasing a home. But when we asked them again, what their kind of price point that would be most needed within the community, they responded with moderate income, so more so that mid level. So once you get past your entry level, how do you kind of maintain your residency and still grow within the community? For the support of potential housing solutions, these really helped us in our recommendations moving forward of prioritizing those. And so looking at establishing an exterior maintenance program, looking at different partner agency opportunities, promoting private sector resources, looking at kind of creative solutions within lenders for special financing, accessory dwelling units, workforce housing, and infill development. So you'll see those responded to within the recommendations and strategies as well. So as I mentioned, the housing demand estimates and housing needs indicators, they include a very thorough and very nerdy analysis of some different projections. And so before we could do that, we had to better understand the need within the community. And so the graphic you see here in front of you is utilizing census data here to better understand what availability of homes and rentals are within the community today that fall within the thirty percent of affordability range for different income ranges throughout the community. And so if we look at that top first one there, for household earnings, zero to twenty, just shy of twenty five thousand dollars, that's about a thousand households within your community today. But when you see the yellow or pink boxes with a red bash around them, that means that there's a gap within those markets there today. And then when you see it on like that second net or second graph, or next below that one, so when you see the yellow or the pink with the green, that means there's a surplus within that income range. And so the only two surpluses that we see in the community today range from households earning twenty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars today. And then everything else on the fringe is in a gap. And so these are important to note to understand, okay, are there more renter gaps or are there more homeowner gaps? And then to see where the competition falls within the market today. And so having a healthy surplus within that or those two ranges is a great thing to see, but that only means that there's more competition from the periphery coming in to try to purchase or rent units within that. And so more concerning for those earning less than twenty-five thousand, because that means they're going to be severely cost burdened as they try to acquire housing within their range, but they can't. And so then they have to purchase above or rent above. And then that, again, only limits the amount of stock mobility people can have within the community as they either purchase below their means or are fighting to try to get something within their price range. For this analysis, we did complete a series of population projections and household projections. And so through the year two zero fifty, we estimate there to be about twenty-three thousand six hundred residents in Indianola. But what this equates to, given your average household size today, is about thirty-two hundred households within the community by two zero fifty. And so then utilizing both that population number of twenty-three thousand six hundred and six and the household estimation of thirty-two hundred, you then start to calculate out what that means for two zero thirty, two zero thirty-five, and two zero forty projections, utilizing a target mix. And so what, how we came to that was we looked at your existing housing composition and what the percentage share is by housing type, whether it be single family, medium density, or high density. And then kind of looked at the responses that we heard of what people would like to see within the community and came up with about seventy-five percent being detached, single family, ten percent being attached, single family. So again, those duplexes, townhomes, fifteen percent being your multifamily. To get a healthier kind of share and spread of housing types to ensure that more young professionals, seniors, single parents can access more housing types within the community as well. And so these totals that you see here are all rolling totals. So by the year two zero forty, we estimate that there's a need for an additional sixteen hundred units within the community, looking at about seven hundred and ninety-four acres of land to develop on there. Obviously, this is going to take a lot of time. It's going to take a lot of different coordination to even get to that kind of development pattern there. But is something for us to be cognizant of as we look to different projections and development patterns within the community. One thing to note here, actually, within the two zero thirty projection, is that when we looked at your planned developments, I think, given or through two zero thirty of the data we have available today and looking at the seven hundred and fifty-two units that you guys are actually on par to meet that by two zero thirty. So I think that's an encouraging stat to see, but also encouraging to kind of build some confidence within some of these projections that you're seeing here on the screen as well. As we take our estimates into units and acres, we also wanted to examine that from an income perspective. And so we utilized, again, the kind of existing composition of the community today, looking at low, moderate, and high income ranges there. Oh, and I apologize, there's a typo on that screen with the table there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The income levels are wrong, the two of them.
Yep, I will get that updated there for you guys. I apologize about that. But then looking at the owner occupied share and the renter share for each of those with the correct numbers, I'm seeing that those are about twenty percent for low income for owner occupied, fifty-five percent for moderate, twenty-five percent for high income, and then reflected there with seventy-five percent on low and twenty-five percent in moderate today. You see the zero there primarily because when we looked at the housing graph, back here, there are no renters within the community that exist today that would be in that kind of higher income renting cohort. So that's why you see that reflected as a zero percent within this table here today. So within this table here, this is important to note. So we begin to kind of categorize and price point out what the target units need to be at in order to respond back to the need for income ranges throughout the community. And so you'll see that far left side of detached, attached, and multifamily, again, looking through the target mixes, but also looking at within the estimated units, kind of a share of what the existing composition is today. And so for detached, single family, that is owner occupied, we would estimate that's about ninety percent of your current stock today, whereas about ten percent of that being renter occupied. And so you see that broken out from that five sixty-four number into owner occupied being five oh seven, renter occupied being fifty-seven, but then taking those numbers there and breaking them down even further into of the owner occupied units, they all need to, or a hundred and eleven of them need to be within that owner or low income cohort. Then two, three hundred and six of them need to be within that moderate income, and then a hundred and thirty-nine within the high income. And so you'll see that reflected throughout the rest of this table. But again, really focusing on that bottom ribbon there, seeing, calling back to the sixteen hundred units that need to be developed by two zero forty to meet the projected need of the twenty-three thousand residents. We see then that four hundred and eighty and six hundred and thirty-three respectively need to be owner and renter occupied units within the low income range. And you kind of see those broken out there and there again, but more so focusing. The existing stock of renter rental units don't respond to the need for kind of high income, more so luxury rental units within the community today. So any questions on all of those data points before we hop into recommendations? I realize that is a lot to try to digest.
I did have a question on the last screen as I was reading through this before, and I don't know that it's been answered. So in the yellow, pink, and red, is that recommendation or current?
That is recommendation through two zero forty.
So again, it does surprise me that we don't, we don't have any luxury rental options. And it looks like what you're seeing is that you don't recommend any luxury rental options.
So I think because of the severe gap that you have here today within the rental market in general, I think we're trying to meet kind of the moderate need in general to begin with. And then if there are opportunities within a single development that they want to throw in a few luxury units, I would not recommend saying no to those. But from a statistics standpoint, we would recommend kind of meeting the middle ground before you move into the higher ground.
Okay, so you're focusing more on what we should target.
Yes.
And coming, the reason I question it, and I have worn the developer hat, and used these needs assessments to sort of determine, oh, does the community see a gap there? So my only concern with that is that I almost feel like we're seeing we don't
Okay.
see a need for any high end rental.
Yeah.
And I certainly think it could be successful in our community. So I just would hate to relay that message.
No, I think that's a very fair, very fair statement. I think within the plan itself, we could always also add a note within this section to say, while they don't exist today, it could be a potential opportunity to introduce that typology within the community, especially from a youngster or young professional standpoint, getting people to the community and building a life here, I think, as well.
And I know there was narrative within the report that kind of called out that there was an absence of it. So I would, most people should be able to infer. I just, like I said, that's what threw me off in those numbers.
Yeah, no, I think that's your, especially from the developer's perspective, to make sure that we're covering kind of all of those bases, shows from the resident side, but then also the developer's side. We hope that they would use this as a tool as well. Any other questions on these?
All right, so moving into then those final.
Then two, three hundred and six of them need to be within that moderate income and then a hundred and thirty-nine within the high income. And so you'll see that reflected throughout the rest of this table. But again, really focusing on that bottom ribbon there, seeing, uh, calling back to the sixteen hundred units that need to be developed by twenty forty to meet the projected need of the twenty-three thousand residents. Uh, we see then that four hundred and eighty and six hundred and thirty-three respectively need to be owner and renter occupied units. Uh, within the low income range, and you kind of see those broken out there and there again, but more so focusing the existing stock of renter rental units don't respond to the need for kind of high income, more so luxury rental units, um, within the community today. So any questions on all of those data points before we rock, uh, hop into recommendations? I realize that is a lot to try to digest.
I did have a question on the last screen as I was reading through this before, and I don't know that it's been answered. So in the yellow, pink and red, is that recommendation or current?
That is recommendation through twenty forty.
So again, it, it does surprise me that we don't, we don't have any luxury rental options. And it looks like it, what you're seeing is that you don't recommend any luxury rental options.
So I think because of the severe gap that you have here today within the rental market in general, I think we're trying to meet kind of the, the moderate need in general, um, to begin with. And then if there are opportunities within a single development that they want to throw in a few luxury units, I would not recommend saying no to those. But from a statistics standpoint, we would recommend kind of meeting the middle ground before you move into the higher ground.
Okay. So you're focusing more on what we should target.
Yes.
And coming, the reason I question it, I'm wearing the developer hat and used these needs assessments to sort of determine, oh, does the community see a gap there?
Okay.
So my only concern with that is that I almost feel like we're seeing we don't
Okay.
see a need for any high-end rental.
Yeah.
And I certainly think it could be successful in our community. So I just would hate to relay that message.
No, I think that's a very fair, very fair statement. I think within the plan itself, we could always, I'll also add a note within this section to say, while they don't exist today, it could be a potential opportunity to introduce that typology within the community, especially from a youngster or young professional standpoint, getting people to the community and building a life here, I think as well.
And I know there was narrative within the report that kind of called out that there was an absence of it. So I would, most people should be able to infer. I just, like I said, that's what threw me off in those numbers.
Yeah, no, I think that's your, especially from the developer's perspective, to make sure that we're covering kind of all of those bases, shows from the resident side, but then also the developer's side. We hope that they would use this as a tool as well. Any other questions on these? All right. So moving into then those final recommendations, uh, for this plan. Uh, we have kind of five key categories of strategies, looking more so at being marketing and development ready communication, promoting alternative housing types, uh, creative housing solutions that you see that call back from the public input there. Uh, processes or processes, uh, or process changes to consider. There we go. Um, and where to promote new housing. And so within this section itself, you'll see kind of those big old strategies being those five. And then the recommended actions being kind of strategic, um, action type or steps to take to achieve each of those. And then at the end of this section, we have, um, a ser- or series of tables to kind of check off and use as a, a resource and, um, uh, resource or resource for you guys as you start to accomplish things. Uh, so for strategy one of marketing and development ready communication, the first or the actions within this one being promoting a your housing story, marketing campaign. I think a lot of the misconceptions again related towards renters are who they truly are within the community. Uh, within those recommendations, we host a series of, uh, case studies as well. And so within this one, the Polk County Housing Trust Fund back in twenty fifteen, they did a strong series of kind of who the renters are within the county. Uh, to portray that they could be a young mom trying to find a home for her two children, um, for them to live. And so again, just kind of breaking down the narrative of who truly are these residents within your community today can be really strong. Uh, updating the marketing campaign for the city of Indianola, looking more so at, um, correcting the misconception that you guys are falling outside the metro when you really aren't. Uh, paving your own way with, uh, RFPs. And so a lot of tactics that we're seeing from newer cities and growing cities, trying to promote different, uh, specific types of development within their communities, like being in the driver's wheel or driving seat of, uh, deploying their own RFP. So if you have a given site, if you've master planned it out, showcasing that and introducing those concepts to developers so that they can respond back to that with their own performance or different concepts and ideas there as well. Promoting development ready sites, more so meaning looking at the geotechnical side of things. If you can have a site development kind of report card to showcase, okay, here's the lot, here's its current zoning, here's what it could be within the future land use plan. Uh, here's what geotechnical surveys have been completed on it, any other kind of related information that could be helpful to just to have a development packet ready for any prospective, um, developers there. Uh, planning and zoning training being a really important opportunity for you all as commissioners to participate in. Uh, the, uh, Iowa State Extension Office is a great resource for this, but also just making sure that you guys are up to date on all the processes. This is obviously a really exciting job, but also comes with maybe the learning curve of trying to understand zoning, trying to understand what's going on in your community. But really just more so supporting the development process and making sure that that is efficient as, as efficient as possible. Uh, strategy two, looking at promoting alternative housing types. So this is where we're calling back to the accessory dwelling units, recognizing that you guys already have this code in place, but other things that are working against it and making those an opportunity for people. Um, is it something to do with the principal structure and the secondary structure and how they're kind of operating from a utility standpoint? Is it your parking? Is it whatever it could be? Uh, looking at again, those three D concrete planted home, which you see in those second pictures there. Uh, the cottage style cluster developments being that topmost picture. But then the ranch style townhomes, some more, uh, family friendly rentals, young professional homes and the homes under three hundred thousand. Each of those four categories respond back to the specific housing types mentioned consistently throughout the stakeholder interviews and the need for each of those, um, to be reintroduced, um, to the housing stock today. For creative housing solutions, this more takes a look at infill development as an opportunity. And so within the development guide or creating a how-to guide, because again, I, I know what infill development is and I can explain it till my face turns blue. But to make sure that we have resources out there that people understand, um, what the process is, who they need to cut, uh, talk to, what zoning requirements do they need to meet? Anything of that sort to break down the process for people to readily access that information would be great. Uh, the concept of pre-approved residential designs is something that we're seeing more and more and more throughout the, uh, planning world. This more so kind of responds back to the, the seniors catalog of homes from like the early nineteen fifties of sorts, but has pre-approved residential designs that have met all of your requirements from a building perspective, they fit the community, um, characteristics. They are architectural stamped and all the fun things, but having a set of pre-approved design, um, designs for residences throughout the community or within a specific area such as that vulnerability analysis could make, um, small scale development a little more accessible on a one-off standpoint for maybe a homeowner that just want, has a vacant parcel, but wants to build on it. And they can do so by, um, constructing that single family home there. Um, for energy efficiency upgrades and standards, looking more so at, you know, building code, are there anything, uh, any items there that could be updated? Any programs that you guys could introduce? I'm addressing homelessness and other vulnerable groups throughout the community, um, via, uh, that strategy there, but also the homeless committee as well as the joint workshop and strategic plan. Um, again, you guys are not unique to any situation dealing with homelessness. And so identifying how to work as a regional partner, what other opportunities are there within the Des Moines metro? Um, as well as your neighboring communities, um, and trying to find different tactics and approaches that you guys can respond back to and provide, um, necessary resources and programming. Uh, for strategy four, process changes to consider, uh, we heard sometimes throughout the, uh, stakeholder interviews that there's some utility confusion of whose water am I getting? Whose electricity am I getting? Kind of things of that sort. And so mapping those out and then posting those on the website being a really quick win to identify that and again, make that information readily accessible. Um, ensuring that we have adequate staffing. So whether you have a grant writer, a marketing strategist, an economic development kind of person. Making sure that they're on staff to, uh, put your guys' best foot forward as you go to different conferences to highlight opportunities within Indianola. Um, market the different, um, uh, development opportunities within town. And then apply for those strategic grants that you guys can pursue to acquire that funding and those, uh, programs in town. Uh, for the development review process, we have a case study here from Belton, Missouri. They have a really thorough and very a- accessible, uh, development process guidebook that walks people step by step from everything, from getting a fence permit to how to construct a whole subdivision. So everything is kind of covered within here to make things again accessible. It has quick links that people can print out the frame, go to it, they have all the contact information. A very good resource to consider implementing again, um, throughout this development review process. Uh, last thing being looking at different partners, funding and resources. There's a lot of different housing programs throughout the state of Iowa today, uh, especially from a national scale that you guys can take advantage of and even reflect of what kind of different programs you all would like to pursue and potentially implement within the community as well, especially looking at those rehabilitation programs. And then lastly, we have where to promote new housing. And so this is where a lot of the housing plan and the comprehensive plan kind of get married. And so looking at the future land use plan and the identified, um, new kind of development areas for residential growth. Uh, looking at the planned residential development, uh, that's identified. So again, the specific low density or yeah, low density, low to medium density and the medium to high density areas, uh, within the, the planning boundary that you see there on the map. Looking at different info locations through, uh, that vulnerability analysis and prioritizing them in those locations. And then the opportunity for different info and just general redevelopment of publicly owned land, so land held by the city, um, for residential de- development opportunities as well. I believe that was my last slide for you all. If you have any questions, I tried to go as fast as I could and not lose you all.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions?
Are tiny houses included in alternatives? I didn't hear that anywhere.
They are specifically called out, uh, from a community perspective. I said, in a sense, the accessory dwelling units and the cottage style developments, depending on the sizes of them, could respond back to that. Um, but that could be something we could integrate within the plan as well. Is that something the commission has heard being mentioned as something they would like to see pursued or?
It's my, I, I'm interested to know about the others. All I can speak for themselves.
I don't know, Charlie and I might be able to speak more to what the code currently goes or doesn't say towards tiny homes.
We don't have anything specifically on it. I think one or two times it's come up here, maybe in the last couple of years, if we've talked to somebody, we've kind of always thought maybe like a PUD route would be the best for it at this point. Just because you're going to have to get, um, somewhat strategic in how you develop those sites anyways, so.
Uh, yeah, I have one more. I'm interested in what city-owned land you're talking about converting to houses.
Yeah. So unfortunately I don't have it in this PowerPoint here, but if you have the plan, which I think, yeah, yeah, I think the page that you have right in front of you is the publicly owned land map. On that next page, there is a plan, uh, a map within the final few pages of that plan that call out the existing city-owned law.
Publicly owned land. I was page one oh seven. On your program.
So the land identified within those parcels, I think, being obviously the, the land held by the city, that could be opportunities to pursue for those kind of projects. Um, I think looking at how they're reflected within the future land use plan to see if those are areas identified for residential development. As well as just seeing if there could be some strategic kind of creative shifting of sorts within those parcels there.
None of them is outside the city limits.
One of the parcels in, in there?
Yeah. Now, there's two, three that are outside, I guess, the city limits.
Okay.
The only ones I know where were the sewage treatment plant. I don't think we want to build houses.
Kentucky Avenue, maybe. Was it by Iowa?
All right. It's on page one oh seven. You might want to look at that.
Yeah.
I was trying to identify what those parcels are.
You're talking the ones, so there's the old sewage treatment plant kind of on the northwest side of the city, and then there's a few on the south edge.
Yeah.
So the, well, on the south edge of the dog park down there along South K Street, a portion of that is actually outside of city limits. And then the other one, uh, along, um, Jefferson there on the south side, that is the very old wastewater treatment facility on the south side of town. So those ones outside of town are all which are plants.
Okay. Thank you.
Now there's another smaller one to the east there too. And I believe that's an IMU substation that's down there, so.
Little dot?
Yeah, a little dot. It's just.
Like Kenny wrote, I'm sure it is. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It's more had a, I'd call it a recommendation more than a question, but as we talk about within this, having the conversation with developers. Are there some cities that are so strong in that to say, we absolutely will not accept that type of development because here's our gap. So you need to, you need to do this instead.
I think it serves as a conversation piece to say, I think this is great, but also right now we're trying to address these kind of needs within the community. Uh, can you maybe reshift your development proposal to respond back to those types that we're looking for? Um, hopefully they'd be open to that conversation. If they're not, then probably going to go somewhere else. But I think to use this as a conversation piece, similar to how you do your comprehensive plan and your future land use plan to say, okay, you've proposed commercial in this area, but we're actually hoping to see high density residential. Is there something that you can, I can find you a different parcel or is that something that you could actually develop within this area? Kind of conversation there.
Back to something that Carrie mentioned before from the developed side of things. A lot of times we will hear from people that want to build a product, but they're not sure exactly what product that is. So they're always asking us, do you have a housing study or an updated housing study? That can give us a good idea of kind of what you're looking for. So I think it's also, this document can kind of be its own marketing tool in that sense.
Only other comment is you've sprinkled in the homelessness aspect of it to, you feel like there's opportunity for us to consider, like, how do we help with that? Because obviously that is something you've, you noticed within the study. And obviously is, I think, more prevalent in our city than we're used to historically.
Yeah, so. Sorry. Um, I hope we're not a tornado one. From the stakeholder interviews, that was something that was noted as a concern. So we definitely did investigate that within the recommendations. And so within the final pages of, I can't even remember which one it was, the the strategy three, those final three little areas there definitely do kind of a high level deep dive. But I think the next step for that is likely to be a strategic plan to identify how you guys want to participate in that conversation and re- respond back to that within different developments, different programs, different resources and such. Um, especially from a local standpoint, but then a regional standpoint of kind of who those partners could be.
Thank you.
Do we, do we have any other questions?
All right.
Do I have anyone in the audience that's here to speak on this item or has questions in regards to this item? And Charlie, this wouldn't be an item that we would vote on.
Well, so we were looking for a general recommendation because this does need to be, um, adopted by the city council. So as part of the process that we set up, we did want the commission to make a recommendation to the council on adoption, if you guys are good with everything.
Would anybody like to make a motion on this item?
I would make a motion, um, with the modification that we talked about, just addressing that there would be a, a room for a higher end rental as well.
Yep. And then the checking of the city-owned land.
Yes.
And then my updating of the table that I definitely missed the title on.
The motion to include all three of those.
All of those one things, yep.
Go ahead and get a second, then we could have a discussion maybe.
I'll second it.
Can we get a roll call vote? Go ahead.
I guess it's a philosophical question. In the survey, there's obviously a decided preference in this community for single-family residential. But to adopt this plan and say you're go, this is going to be the guide. There's definitely going to be a push away from single-family residential. And more to rental. And specifically rental in two income categories. And I guess that's really a I don't know that we want to make a recommendation to the city council, but somehow we need to point that out that this could, could be a significant shift in what housing is available in Indianola over the next twenty years. Sixteen years.
I think what's valuable in that, Hal, is that it's going to bring different people that we don't have today. So today's resident, yep, they want single family, but we want to attract those young professionals who are just looking to get a little bit away from Des Moines, but want that type of lifestyle. And I can only speak to my own child, wanted to live downtown Des Moines because of the really cool apartments that they've built down there. Bringing that type of housing to Indianola would get those type of young professionals here, single, single parents. Um, who are, are looking for a rent versus owning a single family home.
Also, I think, I think we're seeing a shift in the fact that people aren't looking to take care of property as much anymore. People like less work and less upkeep. So that's why I think it's shifting towards townhomes and rentals and.
And, and I think we've, if you look at free proposed developments that I can think of, there's, that shift has already started. Duran.
Becky.
Yeah. Yeah, all three of those are heavily townhome apartment, rental apartment oriented.
I would, I would also add that, at least from my perspective, one community input obviously was, was uh, solicited and included, but it's also a housing needs assessment. And so I think a gap in the homelessness problem ties directly to the gap in housing that's available for people who are below twenty-five thousand dollars annual income. And so, you know, everyone, the ideal situation might be a single family home, but it may not be attainable for everybody. So if we are going to have a healthy community, we also have to have housing types that are attainable and sustainable for all of the people that we need to support, all the businesses in the community too. So I, I feel, I actually feel like this reflects that conversation. Um, as well as the input by the community members.
I agree. It's accurate, I think, because I've, I've heard of several instances of people like we're missing out on you know, other individuals that cannot find rentals. I mean, I, I can't tell, I can't count how many times I've heard that we just don't have the rental availability. It's just because that's which, it seems like that's what is shifting. That's what the study shows. I mean, it's what we're hearing and what we're seeing and what's proved in this data, so.
I, I wouldn't say it's like even a young professional limitation. It, it is the seniors looking to downsize who already have a single family home, but can't downsize because there's nothing available today unless they go to an assisted facility, which they aren't quite ready for, who want to go to kind of thing.
What was interesting was the lack of nursing homes, this living.
And that, that housing, that is also what opens up the under three hundred thousand dollar price point because we can't build that.
Yeah.
Realistically.
Right.
You're starting to shift these older people out of these homes that are old, that can become more affordable for new, new.
The village expansion that we worked on last year was for that very reason. The village expansion that we worked on last year was for that very reason.
All right, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Eamonn?
Yes.
Sarah Ritchie?
Yes.
Al Ferris?
Yes.
Carrie Wordeman?
Yes.
Big Vice?
Yes.
Justin Nate?
Yes.
And Rich Piper?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to item seven B, consider recommendation on adoption of an urban chicken ordinance in the city of Indianola.
Really, while we get this started, I just want to let everybody know, we do have tornado rains in the area. It's all east of town right now, so we're just, we are monitoring it. If anything does happen here, we'll stop the meeting and make sure that we take appropriate actions.
Eastern West, west.
Excuse me, west, I did say east, didn't I? But, um, anyways, I know, uh, Kristen, who's our intern, is going to give a little bit of background on this. So Kristen has, has been involved in one of the tasks that we put her on. This was to do some research on the chicken ordinance. This has been something that her and me have worked on. Um, as we drafted this, but we were going to give her the opportunity to present it here, so please be kind to her as she's doing that, uh, but, um, presentation, and then we'll come back as a normal question and answer after that point, so.
Potato in her pants.
Thank you. Um, so like Charlie said, I'll be talking about the urban chicken ordinance. And so on Monday, April first of this year, the Indianola City Council directed the Community Development Staff to review policy regarding urban chickens within city limits. Um, and so currently, the city of Indianola Code of Ordinances, uh, does not allow for residential animal raising except for an agricultural zoning districts. So this proposed ordinance would allow, um, urban chickens within city limits in all residential zoning districts. And so for this whole process of coming up with a draft of this ordinance, uh, a comparison of urban chicken ordinances established by municipalities with similar characteristics to Indianola was conducted. These municipalities were either located in Warren County, that had similar population size and demographics to this, um, city of Indianola. And the comparisons and information gathered was then used to help shape, uh, the regulations within this proposed urban chicken ordinance. And along with all of that information, we also set up and opened up a community survey about this ordinance on June seventeenth. That's still open until July first to gather any public feedback of this proposed ordinance that any residents might have. And so to talk, to talk about, um, the community survey and the results that we got from it. So as of this morning, um, we had one thousand and forty-four total survey responses. And out of the, that total amount, eight hundred and ninety-nine of the survey participants lived within the city of Indianola. And the remaining participants either lived within the county or outside of the county. And this survey asked about, um, the perceived benefits of urban chickens and the concern of potential challenges that residents um, might foresee. So the benefits of chickens that the survey asked about included source, um, them being a source of fresh eggs, providing a connection to nature, and how they could help reduce food waste. Um, sixty-nine point four percent of residents who took the survey believe that allowing urban chickens could bring these benefits to the community. And we also asked about the concerns and challenges, which included noise pollution, odors, um, issues about health and sanitary conditions, disease transmission, and an overall negative impact on property values. And generally, with all of these concerns and challenges, residents were mainly concerned with noise pollution and, um, obsessive sounds that could be produced from having these chickens. So overall, from this survey, again, just looking at, um, the eight hundred and ninety-nine responses from Indianola residents, um, sixty-eight point four percent of them were in overall support of this urban chicken ordinance. And going along with that, um, with those eight hundred and ninety-nine responses, only forty-nine point seven percent are actually interested in owning chickens. So there's still about twenty percent of residents who are in support of the chicken ordinance, but still have no desire to have chickens of their own. And then in the survey, we also asked residents what other additional regulations they wanted to see in this ordinance, and they're all listed on that chart up there. The main three were limiting the number of chickens allowed per household or lot size, fencing requirements, and mandatory coop cleanliness standards. Um, and talking more about the maximum number of chickens requirement, since that was the number one regulation that residents also wanted to see. Um, so far, the ordinance only proposes that there should be one chicken per two thousand square feet of lot size allowed with a maximum of ten total chickens. Um, and as you can see with the pie chart on the right, um, that's from the survey, again, from the eight hundred and ninety-nine respondents from the city of Indianola. And the majority wanted up to six, while the next highest, um, option was other. And out of the two hundred survey responses who chose other, forty-five of them listed and believed that the maximum number of chickens should be dependent on lot size. And so the Community Development Department originally proposed the maximum number of chickens being at one per two thousand square feet, up to ten. So the larger lots are able to have more chickens and won't be constrained to being allowed only six. And also make sure that the smaller residential lots allow the proper amount of room to house chickens just for the health and well-being of the chickens and making sure they have a substantial amount of enclosure space as well. So we wanted to, um, like I said earlier, we looked at twenty different cities in Iowa who have similar characteristics to Indianola. And we use components of their ordinances that best match the needs of the city of Indianola. And the chart on the right shows these ordinances in these twenty cities and how many chickens that they allow in their ordinances. And the most common one out of the fifteen cities that allow urban chickens from this study, um, nine of them proposed in there is to allow six chickens, and then three of them say dependent on lot size. Um, so the city, city of Indianola is leaning towards more dependent on lot size, along with those three other cities. And then the next couple of slides, I'm going to talk about the requirements that the ordinance proposes based off of um, permit requirements, enclosure, and any additional ones. So the first one is permit requirements, which are up there. And there will be an initial permit application and an annual renewal in order to have urban chickens on a residential property. And if the permit requirements listed here are not met and maintained, the permit can be denied, suspended, revoked, or declined for renewal. And staff is recommended for permits to be required for the allowance of urban chickens, as this is a common practice for cities in Iowa. Who already allow urban chickens within their city, as shown on that chart. Um, and out of the fifteen cities in the study who allow urban chickens, thirteen of them require a permit. Only one doesn't require a permit. Um, and the other one is unknown, their ordinance, which is very broad that it didn't specify whether or not they needed one. And these permits also ensure that people and residents follow the regulations and requirements stated in the proposed ordinance. And it helps prevent any nuisance issues that could occur. Next is some enclosure requirements, which are all listed up there and will be in the proposed ordinance. And these requirements, again, are similarly aligned with the cities in Iowa that we studied for, um, research. And it ensures that the chickens are kept in a safe and appropriate enclosure for their health. It also helps reduce potential conflicts or nuisances that may arise. I do want to point out the top bullet, which says that chickens must be in a fenced chicken run at all times. Um, a chicken run is where it's going to be in that picture. It's more of an enclosed fenced area. While, um, hen houses and chicken tractors are more of what you would think when, um, you think of a coop. It's more of like a building structure. Um, and again, the chicken run is more of that fenced enclosure. So chickens will have to always be in this, uh, fenced enclosure. They won't be able to just roam in people's backyards. And then again, um, another important one is that second to last bullet, which states that there's going to be a minimum of four square feet per chicken. Um, again, that is just what's recommended for the health and well-being of the chickens.
That's a good question. So is this an or? It's either they would need to be in a chicken run or they need to be in a hen house, chicken tractor?
It would be both. It would need, the chickens need to be able to go outside in that chicken run. Um, but like the second bullet says that they must be in a hen house or chicken tractor during non daylight hours. So they would need both proponents.
I have a question too. So if we're limiting chickens per two thousand square foot of property, what's the purpose of having more land for chickens to run when it has to be fenced up the entire time?
Um, that's just what a lot of the ordinances we looked at.
I just think it's a little contradicting on that, so I think that, that needs to be opened up a little bit.
Um, we also have separation requirements too. Um, which is that the enclosure needs to be located in the real yard, not in the front or side yard. And that there's a ten foot setback from property lines and then a twenty foot setback from any adjacent buildings or dwellings from neighboring properties. Then some small design criteria. The materials must be uniform for the entire structure. And all windows and vents must be covered with predator and bird proof wire of less than one inch openings, again, for the safety of the chickens. And as always, it has to be a well-maintained hen house and chicken tractor for sanitary concerns. And so the last chunk of requirements is just, um, these other requirements, which in our ordinance, we will not be suggesting to permit any roosters. Um, all chickens shall be hens. We also say that slaughtering of chickens is not allowed within the city, and the graph at the bottom shows that um, eleven out of the fifteen cities that were looked at in our study, um, all prohibit explicitly prohibit the slaughtering of chickens. And the other, or just do not specify. And again, chickens may not run out large within the city limits. Um, and permit holders must have proper waste storage and removal as well. So in the event that any of the terms within this chapter are violated, the Community Development Department may issue an order requiring the property owner to correct violations within a reasonable amount of time through code enforcement. And then also the community service officer can issue tickets for neglect or abuse of any urban chickens. Um, and again, there will be the variance in appeal process, um, if any resident fires it. And then finally, just some available resources we have for residents who are interested in having urban chicken, um, urban chickens that are out there. That are listed on the screen, and we are currently setting a, a potential partnership for the permanently homing of any abused or neglected chickens um, that might need to be removed from the city.
That was one point I wanted to bring up or question to ask, you know, a couple slides ago, so it's about violators and how they'll be reprimanded forever. I mean, are we going to have people that are actually going to go and like take these chickens away? Because, you know, people see it. Just because you get a permit taken away doesn't mean you're going to stop having chickens, you know? If you get a fee or a fine, you might not pay that, so, you know, what, what kind of extremes are we talking to get these chickens wrangled? Are you guys owners wrangled, so we're not being a nuisance, and then you're talking about getting chickens?
And honestly, it's one thing that we talked about, and a lot of the stuff came out of some of these discussions we had with both PD and then our enforcement staff. Um, it's hard to answer it because, you know, our animal control is run through Cuyahoga, and Cuyahoga has its own limitations that they have, so we're pretty confident that we're probably not going to be able to have them house chickens, just with the limitations that they have. Um, but we've reached out to some other resources, and I know we have a meeting scheduled on Thursday with, um, I don't remember who it is.
Farm Sanctuary.
Yeah, so we were trying to get a little bit more information on that and kind of what we could possibly do if we run into a situation.
Is there any insight from other cities that do allow urban chickens on what they do, my chance?
I haven't seen, out of, again, the twenty ordinances I looked through, they're, they had nothing about how they remove any chickens. I'm guessing it's more of an internal thing they discuss.
Or even the what, what causes the violation, right? Like, shape does the chicken need to be in before we're allowed to make it?
I don't know the answer to that.
Hard it is to take a dog?
Haven't been able to get into contact with them, but I keep trying.
That was the other one, because we know a lot of the other Des Moines communities are doing it, and they're all, how is Animal Rescue League is, is kind of their animal control service. So we were trying to reach out to them as well too, just to get some feedback on how they handle it. Yet, so.
What about, what's the process for notifying about, or, you know, it's my complaint or, or.
Similar to how we have code enforcement right now to where a complaint gets made, and we have somebody go out and investigate it. Um, since this is going to be in the animal control section, it'll probably be our community service officer kind of working with their code enforcement officer to do that. And then we take appropriate steps from there, so. We can revoke permits, tell them they have to get them out. If they don't, we can take action to the court. We can work with a company to come in to remove, things like that.
My question is related to the minimum size per chicken. Did that apply only to the hen house or tractor, or did that also apply to the, um, chicken run, since they're totally enclosed?
Um, so the minimum of four square feet per chicken was just for the hen house and the chicken tractor, um, which is where they would lay their eggs and would go in at night. Um, but like the maximum total enclosure size, that would be including the hen house and chicken tractor and the fenced chicken run. That could be a maximum of a hundred and twenty square feet, but we do not have any minimum.
That maximum, so the maximum square feet of a chicken run in total enclosure would be for like your larger lots and everything else, so, right?
Yep, based off of that one chicken per two thousand square.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
With the permit for the chicken, like when you have to go get your permit for the chicken, would that go through community development then?
Most likely, yeah.
That was on my list.
Yep, so the way we wrote the ordinance was that the fee is established by council, so ultimately that's going to be a council decision if they want to charge a fee or not. Um, we will probably propose such, just because if you're going to have a permit, it makes sense to have it be, but ultimately a council decision.
Will it be required? Napkin drawings or anything for enclosures to make sure?
Yeah, we'll be pretty specific. I mean, we're, we, we try not to accept napkin drawings anymore on a lot of things, so, you know, we, we kind of raised that level. But yeah, there'll have to be some specificity, and as long as when we're reviewing it, we can tell what's happening.
I do like the point that it has to be uniform.
Yeah, and as part of that, will we go and see it, the final product, and then approve it?
Yep.
Through normal billing?
Yeah, I think we take care of that, the inspection process through that permitting process.
You stamp them approval before you move the chickens in?
Of the twenty different communities you went to, what's the oldest ones on the books?
Um, I can't remember that off of the top of my head. The one I looked at the most that had the most previous date was in two thousand twelve. And then a lot of them were pretty recent compared to that. I don't know if that's.
Like in the last three or four years?
Yeah, around then. Oh, some of them were in the past couple months even.
Regards to, um, building permit application process when wanting this, is there a need for a foundation of any sort for it to attach to, so to them blow away? Um, there would have to be some sort of level of making sure that, that it is secure. Yeah, so, you know, we get a wind event like that and you don't have the, the coops flying across the yard, but yeah, that'd be part of our process to make sure those are secured down.
Expanding on Rich's point on the community's survey, is there anything, do we know of any of those communities that don't allow chickens? Did they? You know, like going back to two thousand twelve, do they perhaps have a chicken thing that went?
I didn't see that at all. I saw a couple of them like, what, forward in ordinance like we're on now, and it was denied. But I didn't see any of them going back on it.
So we don't, we don't have any other city feedback, if you will. I'll use Carlisle as an example. I think there's, was recent.
Um, do you have any feedback on how that went?
It's going well, or?
Recent, like it was within the last couple of months, so, yeah.
Benefit, just to say, how did this go?
I, and I, I, I'll just step in really quick. I know colleagues I have within the Des Moines area who are in similar positions that I have right now, and, and there, there's always been discussion that's taken place on this. I haven't heard, um, much negative feedback on there, but then again, we also haven't seeked it out either. But then again, we also haven't seeked it out either. Um, but as Kristen said, like really what is happening? And I think really in the last three to four years is that's kind of when this conversation has really picked up a lot of steam. With a lot of them and a lot of them are starting to get to that point of adoption. So everything is still relatively new. In that sense. So, and again, I don't know if there's any more research that you've done that says otherwise, but.
Going back to our previous point of the housing study. I'm wanting to bring in new ideas and new people. This is kind of a, you know, new thing, obviously, cause everybody's. A lot of these communities are now implementing this last three or four years. Um, and I might've missed it a little bit. Is there anything about? Where you're allowed to, except for start bringing in more mental units and more, you know, multifamily or townhomes, like are they permitted on any of these areas?
So we have, um.
All this residential area?
As long as this residential, we're, um, amending the zoning definition so that R one and R two will have it as a permitted use. And then R three and R four, um, that'll be a special use permit.
But to add onto that question, if it, if it were a multifamily building per se. If I assume the owner of the property would have to apply for the permit, correct? So you couldn't have a renter just go rogue and, okay.
Yeah. So, and again, it, it was Christian was saying is that R three, which is multifamily, R four, which is our mobile home district. Those require a special use permit. So that would be special permission from the board of adjustment to even allow it in those areas.
About the townhouses, even when they're owned, I'm just trying to think of the proximity from each other.
We probably couldn't get far enough from.
Maybe you'll see, uh, some community chicken houses in these, uh, cottage style.
Some comments about the language. First of all. Generic name is misspelled. Chicken, it's, it's gallus, not with a U, not A S. The second is it says enclosure shall mean both the chicken run and the in-house slash chicken coop. Should chicken tractor also be added there?
Yeah, that would be just a typo. It should be chicken.
Okay. And then under section two. And chickens, part three, it says no person shall slaughter meat chickens within the city. I have mixed feelings about that. First of all, you may never know if it happens, but should we write in an exception for? Some kind of commercial enterprise? I don't know if. I don't know if we have any restaurants that get like chickens that they might want to slaughter them on site.
Well, this, this particular ordinance wouldn't apply to that. I mean, this is speaking to the keeping of urban chickens in those residential areas.
We have a banding of the chicken written in there, right? Can we say we can't slaughter abandoned chicken?
They'll all be banned though. Yeah. I, I, again, I, I, I see that. I, I, I understand the concern. I don't think it's. All that big, I, again, it, it doesn't apply to restaurants or anything like that. Health codes and stuff like that when it comes to restaurants and they're doing that. So that's beyond our purview.
The last one is, uh, under that same section, urban chickens. Top of page one twenty-two, it said permit application shall include details. Other proposed chicken run and hen house, including dimensions, location of the property and plans for waste management. Good food storage in there be included.
Just their food?
For the animals, yeah. That's plans for waste management. Thank you.
The advantage for us to look at this, I, is ultimately the city council. And they moved to defer this to the plan and zoning commission for review. And as part of that process. We kind of went through a whole process to do some review and get some feedback and stuff like that before we brought it to you. To make our recommendation to the council. Um, I don't want to necessarily speak for the council, but I know in just some of the conversations I've been having with a few of them. That they have been getting more and more inquiries towards the keeping of chickens. Um, from our perspective in community development, um. Probably i- it doesn't happen often, maybe once every couple of weeks, we will always have somebody calling in to say, you know, hey, can I have chickens? And, um, some people are upset when we tell them no. Um, some people don't make the decision to move to this community because we don't allow it. So they look other places, things like that. So. Um, I know that we've seen a demand, um, not enough of them are in to ever make a move without direction from council. But, um, there, there are people who do.
In the past, there were chickens. Okay, there were chickens. And then because of some problems associated with chickens and ducks, the council. In the past, I don't know how many years ago, but the council a few years ago took an action. And it was quite a lively issue, uh, decided not to allow chickens in the city limits.
Al, is that five years ago or is that twenty years ago?
Also, when Kelly Shaw was mayor and I don't look at the dates up there and I can't remember exactly, but I know he was the mayor.
Maybe no one knows the answer, but when they were allowed, was there this type of framework around it with the permitting and all? It was more loosey goosey.
No, but there, there were, there were no plans. There were no permits. There were just chickens. And no, no, no. There were not a lot, but you, there were certain places you could go and you could hear a rooster crow or you could see chickens in the, in. You know, in a pen in the backyard. And I don't think there were a lot, but there was some problem in one area, I think, that generated the whole thing. Cause they were allowed to scurry around too.
In your survey, was there any indication that people would sell product from these hen houses? Like the eggs?
Um, there wasn't anything in the survey about that, but it would be prohibited in the ordinance. That these urban chickens cannot be used for any commercial use. So no breeding, no selling of chickens and no selling of eggs.
What is the goal of tonight's meeting? What do they, what do you need from us?
We, we at some point need a recommendation to the city council from plan and zoning, whether it's. Yes, this is great. Whether it's, hey, we want some changes, bring it back to the next meeting. Or whether it's absolutely not, we don't want to do this at all. And that's the recommendation.
In other conversations, has there been, and I've heard this briefly this morning, or this evening, has there been any conversation about the enforcement? We, we hear enforcement, we hear fines, but who's going to enforce noise, waste? Disposal, slaughter, selling, breeding, who, who's going to actually monitor that?
I, I had discussions between community development and the police department on this, not exactly who's going to do it. And I think we'll kind of take a little bit of a tag team approach on it. So we recently hired a, um. Community service officer, CSO, um, who has kind of been helping PD on some of the animal control stuff in general. So we would utilize that person and then some of our staff as well. It really starts kind of falling in on the two areas of the ordinance on exactly what, um, the concerns are. I mean, if the concerns are there's chickens at large or there's chickens who are malnourished, PD might be a little bit more involved with that. But if it's a straight nuisance thing where it stinks, um, the waste isn't getting picked up and stuff like that, then our department would be more of that work. But again, we're a small enough city or a small enough organization where I'm pretty confident that between those two organizations, those two departments, I should say. We'll tag team a lot of those complaints as they come in.
Has there been any concern about predators?
Sure. I mean, you, you've got to be and things like this. And, and we know that that, that could be a thing. Yeah.
Do we think that the framework of said cage is going to prevent certain amount of predators?
That's exactly why that was put in because hopefully that deters some of it. Um, when they realize that it's not as advantageous, um, to, to get after it. So we're trying to put those protections in place to hopefully limit that, but.
My question, my only question is, did you say that the survey is open until July first? Is there any concern with making, I suppose it won't go to council until after that. So they'll have full information. Okay.
Exactly. And I, you know, I can tell you, so we put the survey out there within the first couple of days. We had like seven hundred responses and then we've slowly trickled some in since then. So I think there was a big push initially on some of the responses. And then it's been really slow since then.
Okay. This gets back to Justin's question. I think I've been interpreting a little bit what you were asking and. I know there was survey answers is like, why do you want chickens? But I don't really feel like we got a good feel for. If you can't sell the eggs and you can't eat. It's, you want ten chicken pets? And that's why people, and that truly matches. Why we would do this is because that's what people want. They want chicken pets?
It's that, um, and just more of people are saying like the connection to like sustainability, fun for their kids. And also the eggs that they produce also just to eat at home, um, was also a big push reason why it was pushed.
For a person that's had chickens, I miss having chicken eggs. So I would probably, I'd like to have it. And when it went up to five dollars a dozen a couple of years ago, it'd been beneficial to have eggs. So I understand it, but. I, I think you're taking the night, the necessary steps. I mean, like y'all said, you know, it was pretty relaxed and. Might not have been a huge issue, but in some instances it was, is, is our. Post exit strategy to do what council did years ago, probably and just say, hey, it's a problem. We're done, probably. As easy as that.
There's like a four H aspect of it too, maybe like, cause your kids can help raise them and show them in four H. And you know, that's like an agricultural thing, which sometimes in the city limits, they don't get as much of.
And going off of that, I reached out to the, we're encountering, uh, Iowa State University Extension Outreach Program. And they said that they were interested in partnering with the city also and doing like workshops and teaching people how to take care of it too. So having that interactive resource as well.
Do, do we have an objective way to handle complaints?
Yeah, at this point.
I think many complaints that I would predict happening from somebody having chickens be sort of subjective. Right? Your, your chickens are too loud.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
What does too loud mean? I can smell your chickens from my property. Your chickens are too smelly.
Yeah.
What does that mean? Those, so those are the types of things that I'm thinking about.
And, and the only thing I can tell you is having just one code enforcement officer, we can at least be consistent on that hopefully. Um, on, on where that metric comes in, but, uh, you know, in the past, so. Just because we don't allow for chickens, doesn't mean we don't have people who have chickens in town right now. So we get a lot of complaints. Um, the people who have chickens and we had to take action on a few of them because of smell, noise, things like that. So, um. Have some experience kind of on, you know, when that does become too much. But of course, right now it's easy for us because well, it doesn't matter. If it's just a little bit of a smell or if it's a major smell, chickens aren't allowed. So you gotta get rid of them.
I think, and again, what Justin's saying, like I think it needs to be clearly defined. And then to go back about what I said too is like. I think we need to clearly define like, what kind of shape can they be in when we take them? Because I, again, I'm sorry, I'm a huge animal lover, but I'm like, I know how hard it is to take a dog. So what, if we clearly define all of those things, like, I don't know how you define smell, but. Uh, but something along those lines that help that officer and you and everyone else who's going to have to enforce this. Because that's an easy fight to have.
I think.
How smelly is smelly? How loud is loud?
But, but I would also push back and how do you define those metrics? I mean, we, I don't think there's a instrument that'll say, you know, the smell is this much, you know, so we can't have those. Maybe there is, I don't know, but, um, noise is easy because you know, you could do decimals and stuff like that, but. I just, I, I, I get what you're saying, but I would also ask exactly how do you define what those limits are within an ordinance? Other than, you know, it's the same thing right now. We have a nuisance ordinance that says, you know, doesn't talk about chickens. It just says that you can't have nuisance smells coming from your property, but it doesn't necessarily define exactly what. When you get into that nuisance smell. So it's, you know, it's just one of those things that we rely on our officers to make their best judgment.
I'd say like, I think. I think that you're gonna be open. I feel like there's gonna be a pretty big flooding of complaints possibly. And I think that's up to the community development PD to just deal with. And I'm, I'm okay with that. Cause I think that. People want them, you know, but there's a, I think there's a strong, strong number way. And I think going back to Sarah's point about like dogs, you know, also at the same time, like if you're gonna. We're very, very strongly for pets and, you know, this whole issue. From a legality standpoint, let's make sure the city is not opening themselves up to anything crazy as far as like you took my chicken, I'm suing you, you know? Um, so there's that too, but.
Yeah. And is it like a one and done thing, you know, like. Oh, your chicken got out, we're taking it or like you get fined. And then if it happens, like, you know.
That's, that's where the whole red, redication of the permit can come in, into. And there's, there are, you know, things put in to say exactly when we can do that. So.
I would, I think we could go on for a while here. I'm thinking, you know, I would like to make a motion.
Yeah. Uh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I am gonna open the floor to public comment.
Question first though.
Yes.
I think there's, I need some help here. So. Somebody gave notes for all those, because there was lots of recommendations on what we would like.
And as you're being recorded, so we will go back and.
I can't spot all the recommendations of.
All right. I'd like to open the floor to public comment. If you, uh, would like to speak on this agenda item, you can step forward to the podium. And just state your name and address. Um, then feel free to ask any question or questions or make any comments.
I'm Rita Burkinholz. Um, nineteen oh nine country club road, Indianola. We've lived here for thirty years. Um, one thing that, and I don't even know if this is appropriate thing, or if you even care about what I have to say. But, um, quite honestly, I only knew about this today. So it's all well and good that the survey was sent out, but some of us were not aware of it. So, um, where was the survey that? I'm seventy-two years old. Where was the survey that I should have been aware that that survey was being placed out there? And that I would, should have known a response to it. Where should I have known about the survey?
So how did we communicate the survey?
Yeah. So social media, news blasts through our website, email, um, newsletter items and things like that.
What email? How would I bring?
If you were signed up to receive news alerts from our website, you would have received a news alert that said that. And then there was also, and Emily pointed out, the, um, newspaper, Indianola Independent Advocate had information on it as well too.
Hey, well, I don't, they don't happen to have that either. So, and I, so I don't think. Everyone that I, that I know was aware of that we needed to be filling out a survey. So, um, I would like you to take that into consideration because I do think there will be. Additional surveys filled out before July first. So please consider that, even though they've been slow coming in. Like I say, for myself, I only found this out today. One thing that concerns me from a personal aspect is I have sarcoidosis. That is a lung disease. I, it's an autoimmune disease. So I'm susceptible to. Um, things that would might affect your lungs and birds. And especially chickens and bats who carry a fungus, um, spore. That can affect lungs and other organs, but most likely lungs because it's carried through the air. So I don't care where you, my neighbor might place a chicken pen. Those spores are airbound. That would be, could be harmful to me. So that would be a personal concern for myself. Um, I just want you to be aware that I'm not the only person in the community that have autoimmune diseases. Or would be a heavy smart smoker or, um, on chemo or in cancer, any of those kind of things. Those people would be susceptible to histoplasmosis, which is carried by chickens and bats. Um. Um, the other thing is we live on the north side of town. Across from the country club golf course. And we did get a traffic of raccoons and possums. And, but they pass through our yard and just keep going. Um, I would think they might be encouraged to stop by if there were chickens in the area. And just so you know, I mean, I think that might be, um, might draw in more predators. Um, I might draw in more predators to stop by the backyards in our block. And so that's another concern that I have, so again, I I hope. When I know that your job might be to make up some regulations or in your. Um, whatever you suggested council, but um. Hope you keep some of those things in mind and um and maybe. Keep in mind that there still may be more responses to this survey bef- by the first of July. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi there. This is Joe, I live eleven oh three Van Parkway. And I've uh was born and raised in Indianola. Lived in Dallas for about seventeen years, when HOA president uh in Dallas of a community. Would actually uh, you had asked earlier, what's some history on how that affects people for a duration of five, six years? So my HOA, we actually wanted to have chickens, which it was allowed. In our region of uh, which was Dallas County, Dallas Texas. And but it was up to the HOAs to decide if we wanted to implement that for our residents, which there were twenty residents within our HOA. So we actually had about sixteen, I recall, uh that were pro having chickens. We went ahead and followed through with that, and of that. After three years, we only had four residents that wanted to continue having chickens. In the properties because of the odor, um as if you notice uh in the linear line where Dallas resides. As far as heat, of course, we're dealing with a lot hotter in Dallas, but we're in moisture plane. So you're dealing with the same humidity ratios as you are in Dallas. And on those still days, it would smell so putrid. Uh just from two houses down, it would almost surround that whole area on a daily basis. So um when Brad Resin tried to sell his property during the duration of owning. And nobody would buy the property. The ruler needed to switch realty companies twice, uh and this was in a high prime area of Dallas. But it was deterring all the buyers. That is another fact that was pulled up. Whenever we access that, which um brought up the devaluation of properties and the distracting. Of a lot of new residents when they are encountered with odors. Uh that's a very big issue for people that have the option to look at Grimes or. Look at Johnson, especially people, Des Moines has such a good draw. For that, you know, with all these businesses that are started, you know, hell here, it's kind of like Austin. You know, it's that same demographic, it's the capital city, same ratio, brings in a lot of young new families. But again, with that nice middle class that we're trained to, you know, obviously pull towards. There are sensitivity levels that are a luxury that people can not want to deal with. And that could be against walking of chickens or crowing of roosters or the smell. And that can devalue properties and also cause a problem for realtors to turn properties over efficiently. Which can affect the neighborhood directly. That's something that's important. Um, I also, as was Rita Birkenholtz, I actually never received any kind of survey whatsoever. I was told about this through a friend in town. I never received any survey. Um, I don't know why I did not, I am a resident of Van Parkway in Indianola, but I think this is a survey that. Is against something that if it's gonna be taken very seriously by everybody here, I think that every citizen. That's paying taxes in Warren County, Indianola, should have a say for a real consensus vote, as sort of a vague. These people who've subscribed to this website can see this, well, that's not the whole population. And that's not really giving us an accurate number for the whole city. Being that again, several residents have never even heard of the survey. So again, that's something to think about too, is how accurate is are those numbers? Those people might be prone to the ones that are seeking out the chicken situation. As opposed to those like me who are, yeah, not for pets, but again. The fine line, you had mentioned four H inclusion, and I think one benefit that Indianola has geographically that Dallas didn't have. Is we have a lot of great resources, Boy Scouts, four H clubs. We might be rural around us, that rural area around us can be utilized to learn about chickens. On a property, on a location, on a field trip. There are places for that that wouldn't invade everybody else's homes and every other uh other people's properties. We do have a string of a lot of rural area all around Des Moines, all around Indianola, I should say. We're far from a uh epicenter where there's no source for viewing chickens and how they produce eggs and how they. Live their lives, I think that's a wonderful, small aspect of Mother Nature. To look at, but doesn't need to be for all of our home areas, you know. Again, property lands in Indianola tend to be a little bit on the smaller sides, kind of addressed by you, I believe as well. Not everybody has a half an acre. And again, a lot of parcels are very wedged and that's gonna affect, we already have certain areas and times of the year, we smell the newer in the air. And that's already an issue, there are being complaints about noise from the figure eight races on the other side of town. So we wanna have another complaint issue for you all to deal with, which will come down to again. Again, feather allergies is a real problem. Um again, there's only one registered licensed allergist within Indianola itself. Um, there isn't really a lot of medical people here, there's nobody licensed in Indianola, only two in Warren County. Were actual allergists. I myself have allergies and had to go to Twenty Second Street to get an allergy panel. Find out, my number one allergy was feathers. You have to look at a lot of immune in time to get those patch tests done. Not everybody has access to that, insurance doesn't cover all of that, so find that out, especially with a family bringing children in. For a really free disposition to give me allergies. You know, you have the resources or the time to go and deal with that, is that something that we. Really think is so important just to have as a pet, but isn't going to improve. Um, the economic situation here in town, it's not going to improve restaurants, it's not going to improve anything. Fiscally for the city, and again, the devaluation of the properties to the realtors. Is a real problem, because we have a lot of competing cities. That really want to bring in the same demographic we want to bring in. Young families that are based out of corporations such as Wells Fargo, Principal, all of the above. And that is the growth, that's the seed that's gonna really grow this town. But again, if we're off putting in that, it's real easy for them to easily. Look at other cities, and again, Grimes does not have that, for instance, as the equities to the downtown region. But we do have a lot of agricultural land that can be utilized for a great four H organization, for those that do wanna, you know, have a participating action. For those very specific people that want to have that relationship with their chickens. And know how they lay eggs, if they don't want to Google it. Um, with social media, most people now just, you can rational process happen on a YouTube video, but if they want to touch, go and see it, maybe. That's why we have great clubs like Boy Scouts and four H, some great agricultural land. But I'm sure many people would love to let children come on to. And see that for field trips, which is a great learning experience that not has to subject every resident. And uh that's my concerns and my my thoughts, and again, I think I didn't say with the HOA thing. I mean, it's a very tiny demographic, but it's something to show how that did fall back. Kind of where he was saying, which was, you know, during Mayor Kelly Shaw's time. But this was actually only sixty-seven years ago. And the demographic for many HOA was all. Thirty to forty year old, young families with one to two children. That kind of draw, we're willing to bring in to Indianola with, you know, single family homes. And being the largest population in Indianola, I think that should be considered. And again, the survey or the lack of access or knowledge of the survey. Is definitely pigeonholed here, and not bringing a broad sense of everyone, because I didn't know. And I've had several friends that didn't know how many are known, what's the percentage that actually got surveyed of the city? That could be one sixteenth of the city. You know, that's kind of a, that's kind of a pigeonhole, so. Anyways, but uh that's kind of my thoughts, any questions for me?
Uh, it's interesting that you do have that um insight from the HOA perspective. Do you have any idea of the original twenty residents that, you know, were interested in that? You know, and then three or four years later, that you only have four people or whatever many years. Were they transplant people or like, were they all twenty so?
Uh, there were about, I would say of the twenty, maybe sixteen to eighteen were all established there, I was actually the newbie. Nobody else went with the HOA president, uh it kind of those thankless jobs where I'm like. Kind of got duped into it, don't really know how that happened, actually, in retrospect, I don't even know how that happened, uh can't think of it. But um everybody there was living there prior to me. So as far as how long they'd all lived there, I'm not too sure on that, but I do know that those that were involved. Nobody, there were only two residents that had moved out and gone in during that tenure that I was there. So we're dealing with an eighty percent ratio of twenty percent, of twenty people. That were all about it, thought this is great, you know, this is society is doing this now, we can, we have chickens, and then. Without really looking in at the nuggets, including myself, sort of all of a sudden, they were like, oh. Oh my gosh, this is a mess, and fortunately, I was lucky enough not to be you guys, that had to deal with like hundreds of people. I only deal twenty, and that alone was kind of obnoxious, but it was manageable because we're only twenty. So we just had to put it to a vote, which was much easier than what you guys have to do. And yet uh I was very glad to have that insight with people, because again. Not a lot of us knew what we were getting into, sounded kind of cruel, sounded kind of new, sounded fresh. I don't know, it sounded hip, and yet then it wasn't, you know, all of a sudden, what sounded like a good idea. People ended up wanting out on. Were the structures like similar, like, oh, yeah, the city of the coast, but it situated, that was more of a city situation as far as was allowed for them to have via me. Again, kind of as a, as somebody else used to word, as a renter who owns a rental apartment, you kind of view me as. That kind of a person for an HOA. So they had this, they had to do a buy, not by me, but by the city, for what they were allowed to do. And the infrastructures were similar to what she had said with the runs and tracks, and. That's all very similar, and that's, I think, nationally similar in so many aspects, but. But the problems that we did have ended up being mainly dominantly, the number one complaint of the ones that did switch during that four to five year period. Was the odor, uh the second was the noise. And that was something that, again, when you're close, when your lots are small, which ours were fairly narrow, because Dallas is very vertical. And um so nobody has sprawling yards and acreages. And that noise pollution became a a real problem, I would say equally as with the odor. The odor, depending on the day or how much the wood was burning, but that's, that's asking Mother Nature.
Yeah, I'm not really, like, and I'm asking for everybody, like, noise ordinance to me means rooster, I mean, is there other noises that were?
They do, they they do actually make noises that are. And boy, it's a, it's not a signal, uh when you are trying to go to bed at night. And it's not a great noise when you're trying to take a nap in the afternoon on Sunday. Um, it has its time and its place, and I think that's why we love the farmland here in Iowa. I had a fortunate vision or 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 I had this great little uh aspect, people would say, I was born and raised here, worked at Drake. And lived in the city, and we came back and realizing, we had a lot of farming to be utilizable for this kind of. Access so that people can gain knowledge for what this is, that itch they want to scratch as part of the chicken boundary, if I can call it that. Um, again, but really something, but again, there is a line between a comfortable residential neighborhood and also. Somewhat of a a problem that might end up being to where people are having some chicken owners. Um, and or possibly even worse problems with neighbors. And that becoming an eternal problem with them ends up involving more of you guys with bureaucracy. How do you control that? A lot of those questions you guys are asking amongst yourselves. How much is too much of a problem? When is the smell too much of a smell? When is the squawking too annoying? How do you guys govern that? Because that's such a very gray area, really, you know. Um, that would almost involve a whole department of people, which would cost the city a lot more money as well down the road, so. Just leave the thought from my end, any other questions that you may have for me?
I really appreciate it.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Hi, I'm John, my name's Kelly Michael, I live at two one zero North Seventeenth Street. I wasn't really gonna talk, but we're not gonna end it on that kind of note. Um, as a veteran, I'm very fond of freedom, and unfortunately, I pay taxes as well, so. We're always gonna have people that are, there's something, that again, something, that's just gonna come with being adults here. Um, he said, like he said, I don't know his name, we can go and use Boy Scouts or the FHA, I'm a homeschooling family. Having children on my uh, having chickens, my children will be able to go learn how to take care of animals, um responsibility. It's more so not just chicken pets, um I have five kids, I have five families, we're giving out five dozen eggs a week. Um, that's expensive, um, we have beautiful farming in here. Unfortunately, as one of those younger families that, like you just spoke, you want to come to the community. I can't afford acres of land, but what I can afford is the home that I have now, and the least that I run is some chickens. They're not asking for a flock of chickens, lay the groundwork, come back in a year, see what worked, see what didn't. Reevaluating, you're already getting permits, you're already getting to come under our property, you know what I mean? Just lay the groundwork and then we'll come back, like you stated, you had twenty people, only three of them wanted to do it. Now we're gonna have ten thousand people on chickens, we're gonna have five hundred people maybe, according to his statistics, around a hundred and three years. Sorry, I said, that's kind of throwing me off, you know what I mean? Mama's to my happy ass, man.
Me, what, what, I think it's gonna set my happy ass back down, the content's sending unfortunate.
I'm from Fort Worth, West Iowa, we bought our house thirty years ago, bringing chickens around. To me, this is a big change, if you're going to allow it, all adjacent property owners should sign off on it. Just as Joe said, that's gonna affect our value of our properties, so we should be a part of it. Well, if if adjacent property owners think it's okay, I guess, you know, they're the ones that are gonna be affected. So it really, it it should, we'd come back, because it's, it, if I get ready to sell my house and and we got a chicken coop behind it or the smell. And that's gonna be a real tough deal to handle. But now there's one person, the other guy goes, I didn't smell anything, well, you're 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 gonna open up a can of worms being able. Handle that, just as Des Moines has that problem all the time with their packing plants, so. Anyway, keep it in mind.
Thank you. Charlie, I I have a question um for the next speaker real quick, um in this document, in this preliminary document. Following up on this gentleman, i- is there a post of requests for a permit, is there such a. Application for that process? I know we do posts for zoning changes, is there ever a need of a post for said neighbor? To indicate to the community, the street that they live on, I wonder, um, hey, I want to put in a chicken.
We did not put that in the ordinance at all, Jerome, so, no, I'll just say, we did not.
And in the research you did on the other twenty communities, did you ever see such a posting or a suggestion of a posting, I wonder?
The closest thing I saw is a couple of the ordinances had a requirement to get a permit, they had. The property had to reach out to um the residences within a hundred foot radius. It was just to alert them of their intentions, it wasn't to have them sign off on it.
Understood, thank you.
Other ones?
Last observation in the public speaking here, are there any in this proposed document, and it sounds like there are gonna be several addendums. Is is there any requirements for once um somebody abandons the chicken process? I wonder if there's any requirements for the structure that was left behind. Now, let's just say, I, hey, I, two years later, I don't want to do this anymore, is there, is there? Concerns of property values in that particular.
I'll, I'll take the notion, I'll take, let me look a little bit here and then I'll let you know before we finish. Thank you.
I'll hold my comments until later.
Sixteen hundred West Thirteenth Avenue. Uh, just finished a term on council in December. Um, first of all, I want to say thank you for your service. I am definitely a daughter of a veteran, a patriot before I am Christian and a patriot before I have many things. I do like Don's suggestion, you have to have um, approval by neighbors if you put up a, a utility shed um, within two hundred feet of property. So I think that's an excellent point. Um, having served on council, I can learn before you and tell you, no one ever asked me um, in four years um, if like, if we could have chickens or encouraged me to push that. Um, definitely frequent contact with constituents all over town, not just my ward, no one ever mentioned it. Um, so I was really kind of surprised when I noticed, I watched some of the meetings, I didn't see that on April first that council directed. And I was kind of surprised because one of the things that did happen when I was on council frequently was people would bring concerns, I would go to staff, staff would say, we're really tight on time. Um, code enforcement is on a self-report basis, um, and often then really difficult to do. Uh, because our code enforcement officers are busy with inspections of rentals and inspections of new properties and, and things like that. So often when there is an unsightly um, mess in town that people are complaining about, the answer I got was sorry, we don't really have time and it takes a long time to do it and we, it takes weeks and months sometimes, you know, to go through the process. So those are things to keep in mind. So I was kind of surprised um, that council would have staff take all of these staff hours on three staff members. Um, that seems like a, a lot of uh, precious time that could be spent. And honestly, in my opinion, it seems as though that survey was initiated to produce the results it produced. I don't think it was distributed um, the way that perhaps it could be maybe in a utility bill to reach all people who are property owners. Um, I, I think it was initiated to produce the results we got. And it's a very small minority of the population of sixteen thousand people, I mean, do you know, who would like to have chickens? And even a smaller portion of those who completed the survey that really would have them. Then you, it's okay to have them and then I will have them are two different things. Um, and again, back to the code enforcement, I guess one of the things I was thinking about is what we talked about earlier, wood storage, uh, waste removal. Can TRM take that? Can Waste Management take that? What are the procedures? Um, I do think it's just a, it's a step back in time, as Al mentioned, you know, we used to have chickens and I honestly don't remember that. Um, lived here thirty-three years and I probably, you know, and I didn't notice it, um, but it was an issue when, when uh, Mayor Shaw was in office. But I did grow up by chickens. They are, you know, I'm sixty-eight, so in the fifties, sixties, in my little hometown in northern Iowa of a thousand people, um, the person right down the street had chickens. We all, I mean, they were all over town. It was a normal thing, um, you know, post-World War II. But they were loud, they do spread disease, um, they are dirty. And um, I guess I would ask two things. First of all, I would ask that you not recommend this to council. And if you do, I would ask that you take Don's suggestion and that neighbors have to approve it, um, just like they do a utility shed. So that's all I have. Anybody have any questions for me? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Nicole Duncan-Lifrin and I live at three oh six North Seventeenth Street. Um, first of all, thank you for putting together the survey. Um, you know, I am aware that it was available through the city website, also the city newsletter. Um, I don't think it's realistic for folks to expect that a survey is going to reach every single resident. Um, I mean, that's just not realistic. No one's going to knock on your door and ask you to take a survey. So, you know, being engaged citizens requires that we use the tools that are available. And I know that agendas and packets are always available through the city site for these meetings and city council meetings. So, you know, just part of being engaged citizen is using those resources that we have. Um, I do want to make sure that we, we really look at, you know, chickens and wanting to have chickens really comes down, I think, for most folks that are interested in having them and being able to control some of their family's food source. Um, you know, in addition to that being sustainable, it's also a great way to provide that hands-on learning. Um, when you are in four H and you have a four H project, you're responsible for animals, for caring for that animal. It's not a field trip to go learn about chickens. I mean, that's, that's a great thing to do. I take my girl scout troop on field trips all the time, but for a four H project, you know, if you're, whether it's a dog that you're training and showing an agility, you are responsible for doing that, whether it's cattle, sheep, hogs, et cetera. You are responsible for caring for those animals, learning about the life cycle. Um, you know, everything from beginning to end. So it's not as simple as just finding a farmer that will let you come and do a field trip. Um, and that's really not what folks are looking for. They're looking for opportunities to teach their children about being more sustainable, about being more sufficient. Um, in order of fostering that connection to environment and, and just where our food comes from. Um, I wanted to also touch on the fact that chickens um, contribute to waste reduction. And actually, there was a city, Lemberg, Belgium, in two thousand and ten, the city gave three chickens to two, to two thousand households in an experiment to reduce waste. The following month, the local landfill reported a one hundred thousand pound decrease in food-related waste. So from our garden, at the end of each year, we take it out to some friends that live out in the country and have a bunch of free-range chickens and there we go, bananas for all of those things. So um, you know, that sustainability, that reducing food waste, et cetera, is another thing to consider. In addition to chickens being great natural exterminators, um, they gobble up grasshoppers, hookworms, potato beetles, termites, ticks, slugs, barn grabs, centipedes, spiders, et cetera, reducing the need for pesticides. Um, well, of course, you know, any animal comes with smells, right? Um, just like if you have cats and you change their litter box, that goes in the trash and the garbage picks it up. Um, same if you pick up after your dog, that goes in the trash, garbage picks it up. Um, you know, disposing of waste properly is important. Um, I would hope that after folks get their permit, go through the steps required, look at, you know, the classes that are required or proposed. Um, that folks understand the work involved in taking care of chickens, maintaining the coop, et cetera. Because, I mean, there's money invested in this, right? Chickens aren't free, feed isn't cheap. So, you know, folks, I think up on top of having to apply for a permit are going to, you know, have some skin in the game from a financial perspective, especially after building, uh, you know, a chicken coop, a run, et cetera. This isn't something that folks would take lightly, I would assume. Um, I just wanted to, to really point out the sustainability, the waste, the pest control pieces of this as well. Um, and also my family, I mean, we go through three dozen eggs a week. It's a great source of protein. Um, it's very economical and if you had farm-fresh chicken eggs versus store-bought eggs, um, you know the difference. Any questions? Any? Thanks so much.
One more. Jeff Schroeder, sixteen hundred West Thirteenth Avenue. I ran businesses on my life as a businessman, for the life of me. I ca- I've tried to pencil out a raising chickens in town that possibly save you money. At the time you invest in the chicken coop, by the time you invest in all the things you have to invest in, by the time you buy the ground corn for eleven, twelve dollars a bushel, and over eating bugs, they don't just eat bugs. So I just don't believe that when you talk about sustainability, I think there are other things at play here. And I'm just one person with, living in a town. I live in a town because I lived in a town where there were chickens when I grew up. But in those days, towns weren't as densely populated and they were larger lots. And at some point, they reached the conclusion that this was a city, it's a growing city, let's not have animals within the city limits. No one here has talked about the flies. Um, flies are a big problem and you add livestock to it, livestock brings flies. Um, chickens do most of their poopin' through the chicken loins. Unless they're going to pick that chicken wire up all the time and clean underneath there. I mean, I grew up on a farm too, so I don't love cleaning up chicken poop, not fun. So let's, let's just not go back to that day, okay? And I would ask you for that consideration. Thank you very much. Any questions? And if somebody's got a business model for it, I'd love to do it. I love, you know, that, I've done some of that work for businesses and look at their business plans and lay that out and say, okay, you know, this is going to be a profitable business or have you thought of this because? So if someone's got a business plan, I'd love to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's me, Michael, two ten North Seventeenth Street. Um, I do want to go back to those days. Um, nervously. Um, while I am a Christian before a patriot, we are, my husband thought, and it gets frustrating to have to jump through so many hoops just to like, take care of your family in the way that you see fit. Um, because we do homeschool and with doing that, raising chickens would, might not be the most um, financially sustainable, but it would be sustainable in the way of they're learning um, science through it. Um, they're learning how to take care of an animal, anatomy, behavior, genetics. Um, there's a way to even incorporate math with it and again, going somewhere and seeing a field trip, that's cool. But it's, it's not the same. Same as like going to the dog park isn't the same as actually playing fetch with your own dogs. Um, you learn about handling food safety and handling food. Um, you can also teach them how to create a closed-loop food source. So you feed your chickens and you use that poop to then, like for your garden. And then you can actually grow their own food so that we don't have to buy it. Um, because I actually disagree. I think that a lot of people in the next generation that you're wanting to move here, they do want to go back to those old generational like roots, where they want a garden, they want to have chickens. Not necessarily mass farming by any means, but they do want, um, they do want that, they just can't afford those huge acreages. Um, and I was actually going to share the same uh, statistic from Belgium. Um, and yes, Belgium, because other countries are able, like, have not quite so strict of laws of things. Um, and it also creates a closer community because you and your neighbors can share different things and different tricks and the eggs. Um, yes, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to refer back to the commission. Does anyone else have any questions or would like to discuss this any further?
My one comment is related to the surveys and I know, I know we've gotten feedback before about people not receiving notifications when it's something going on at their neighbors even. And this is a community-wide act that I do wonder if we should do more to get a broader response of surveys. When you're talking about residents at sixteen thousand and we have less than a thousand responses, I do think that we should delay our recommendation. Um, we have a lot of changes that we want to make, so I think a, a further discussion is important as well as reaching our residents. We have a large um, amount of senior residents who don't use social media, who don't go online. Um, so I do think that it's important that we try to get a larger response um, from, from that. And our, our newspaper is a subscription-based newspaper and I've heard that comment before as a community member that we don't have free newspapers where they can find these things out. And if they don't use social media, which again, large population, I do feel like we owe it to our community before we make a recommendation further to have more people respond. And I don't know the exact questions of the survey. I didn't take it myself. Maybe I definitely should and I'll take that away today. But just the, the desire for and um, that are, I think we owe it to the community to wait.
Well, the oldest and least and most technically inept person on this commission took that survey. As I get the, I signed up to get the newsletter from the city. Uh, every, it comes out every Friday uh, from Jackie. And there was a, a link in there that took you right to the survey. So if you get that city newsletter or whatever it's called every, every week, uh, it was on there.
I have a question.
And when all newspapers are subscription, aren't there any free newspapers?
I'm thinking we need to mail something to our resident in some capacity, whether it's just a little blurb on their city utility bill or something that we could do to bring awareness to the fact that the survey is out there because it does impact the entire community.
Okay, if I speak, Aaron Young, Communications Manager for the city. So I do just want to be able to specify all the areas that the survey has been communicated, both social through the channels that we have at City of Inno. So of course, the website, if you were to go to the homepage, www.innoiowa.gov. And you scroll down a bit, whether on your laptop or on your mobile device, um, underneath city news, if you just scroll to that second item, it's pinned prominently. It's all the running updates we've collected so far to educate and inform the public of this process from June third, when the survey was launched to the purpose of bringing to the next steps of tonight's meeting. So we'll continue to do that with these updates, but obviously it lives on ininoiowa.gov. Um, as Al talked about, the City of Inno, a community update, um, I, I organize that in collection and collaboration with our city staff. So does get sent out every Friday. I'm more than happy to um, sit down with folks after this meeting who's in the audience today to get you signed up. And for those who are watching online, the Warren email is always open to help uh, have our community be engaged. Um, I will say for the sake of probably the mailing, whatever that looks like, it will probably incur additional expense. You're probably talking thousands of dollars in postage. So you want to make sure we do keep that in mind for, um, as we talk about additional survey responses, so.
Can I ask a question? The magazine, does that go to everybody?
It does go to all, five one two five zip codes. It is quarterly. However, um, by the time when the magazine was going to be published, it's actually supposed to arrive on uh, on all of our property owner's doorstep as early as tomorrow. And because of print deadlines and for the sake of getting this like QR cutter stuff developed, you're talking literally probably twenty-four, forty-eight hours away from um, being able to squeeze this information. And so unfortunately, we're past the print production to squeeze that in.
And I definitely understand that. I just wonder, this probably isn't, I guess, my opinion, is this probably isn't an issue that is going to cause some sort of major consequence for us to delay. So I guess I, I would lean towards what Sarah recommended in, included in the next edition, understanding that might be down the line, but.
What's the next publication date?
Or that magazine, it won't be until September.
Or could we get in the Indianola Utilities Bill?
We'd have to have that conversation with IMU. Um, I personally don't have too much involvement with IMU, so that'd be on a request-by-request basis.
The other thing I would point on that too is a lot of people get their bills digitally too, so they're not going to get that.
But we're trying to reach the people that don't get digitally because.
Hundred percent, and that's, that's a good point. Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, skew it the other way.
Well, the other thing, so I, just from my standpoint, let me say a few things. So we've put a lot of surveys out before. Um, when we did our comprehensive plan update in twenty twenty, we had a survey open for about three months. And that was by far the most survey responses we've had since I've been here on any survey and that was fifteen hundred. So a thousand in a short time is actually a really good response rate comparison. We talked about, I was in study here previously, we did everything in our humanly power, other than sending out notices and knocking door to door to let people know about that. And we had a hundred people take it. So sometimes you can get a good response, sometimes you don't get a response at all. And, you know, you just, you have to run that. I mean, yeah, the, the options that we could do to inform more people, come with money, you know, there's, I don't know how many households, go back to that number that was on that, I'll do that. Yeah, I mean, so fifty cents a mailing, you're, you're looking at a pretty expensive mailing to do on that. And we just can't afford to do that without some budget amendments from the council. Um, and you know, the other thing I would note is in the election that we have, you typically have, you know, two to three thousand people vote in that election. So um, you know, a thousand people taking a survey, again, it's, it's pretty on par uh, on that. So I was pretty surprised with the response we got. I was pleased. I was pleased with the response we got, I was happy with the response we got, I know it doesn't always touch everybody, but I I I personally feel that we did get a good response on it.
I do feel like a lot of times when we have public comment, so substantial amount of public comment. No matter what the issue is, it's always, there's always at least one or two of those people that discussed, you know, in the audience that, well, I didn't get this, you know, so I think that's just a. Overcase basis, so I think that we're, it's still on par, I mean, the survey will go out, they're, they're accessible.
And it's still ongoing too, and that's the other thing to point out is that, if you're gonna engage in zoning commission, this is like. As far as the public process, sometimes step one and two of a ten-step process, so there's city council consideration, survey still open yet. Um, city council, they're gonna make a change, have to review this at three different meetings, they have to have three readings of it ordinance, so there are still opportunities, and I mean. I think we kinda timed this out, if you were to forward a recommendation today, um, I think we're looking at sometime in September before this ordinance is even adopted, so. We got ways to go before we're at the finish line, if we do have something going on.
I think that would be my. Only, my reason for not delaying is just because I know that it still has to go to city council and then, you know, they have to review it. So if the survey's still ongoing, you know, whatever we decide is not the end-all be-all, people can still take that survey before it gets to that point.
They also have public comment on all three of those meetings.
So typically what they'll do is they'll do a public hearing on the first one, um, the first consideration and then depending on how feedback's coming in. We'll always take second and third consideration and we typically put those on a consent agenda, but council members, if there's a lot of public feedback coming in, can take those off and ask for public comment at that standpoint, so. It just, it's really dependent on the amount of feedback that we're getting, obviously, if it's similar to what we're getting tonight, I think that they would probably get taken off and put on a regular.
Their public feedback is limited, if I recall, to a certain amount of minutes.
Their council policy does have a certain amount of minutes on there, I think it's usually three to five minutes, somewhere in that range, um, and that's typically up to the mayor to decide if she, yeah.
I don't wanna say anything, I just want you to know, cause I know you're talking about the website and the advocate and all of that and I live at the village. And I would say, I mean, I don't know, I didn't take a survey of the village people, I don't know anybody there. That goes online and looks at city things and most of them, I just came from a dinner and I mentioned it and no one had heard of it. And, you know, I don't, I don't have the answer. Another thing, while I was sitting there, I was thinking, so you had a thousand, I don't know, responses, or you had seven hundred positive responses. Those are not seven hundred homes. Those are people, I mean, you had to be a city resident. If you have children and they have their own email address and their own, they're residents too. So I don't think we're talking about, I don't know, five hundred people. Five hundred homes that want chickens, I think, like, husband and I just found out about it, we both drove. So I can, I know a lot of families that their children vote, they have teenagers, they're all online, they all have their own email addresses. And I just think it's an inadequate survey, I don't think it really tells the story, but at least. At least people my age, and people that live at the village. And otherwise.
I'd like to just point out, devil's advocate of that is your two votes are the same as two other people's votes though, so if you have.
Sure.
You have two children or three, you know, it can, it can go both ways, so we don't know that if there's four hundred responses that were against it, that those four hundred people didn't have.
It's worth looking at number of households. What your point in that is, if we can look at the survey and say specifically, this is the number of households we heard of versus the house number of people.
Number of people.
Yep.
That's what.
Your residences.
That's my question.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Uh, I was, something touching early on another point, um. He was, when Schroeder said that we, do we require to get approval from a neighboring. Parcel. You build a shed?
Well, you know, so the, the only thing we have is like rezonies, subdivisions, um, there are certain. Things that you review on the Board of Justment Reviews where there is notification that's made within two hundred feet of people. Um, so if you're requesting a variance, if you're requesting a specially used permit, if you're requesting a rezoning, if you're doing a subdivision, we are required to notify within two hundred feet.
If I have a permit to get a shed, I can just, I can put a shed if I get approved, that's, I mean, so I thought, okay. So. Back to, I think our first speaker's point was, you know, is it possible to. In that same sense, if I want to get a permit for chicken coop in my backyard, is it possible to have a requirement that, you know. Cause it's a health risk, could it potentially be a health risk to adjacent properties, can there be a requirement that, you know. At that point, we mail out, you know, we spend the fifty cents per adjacent property and mail out to those people and say, hey, this is real. If you have a real concern and a health risk, please, you know, identify this, otherwise, you know, we're going to proceed, is that something we could add into it?
Yeah, one hundred percent, you could add some sort of process in there, I, I don't know exactly how that would be written past, uh, you know.
Pretty complicated all this.
Sure, sure, exactly, I mean, I guess, I'm kinda thinking of it, if, if we follow how we do other things, it's, it's letting people know that this has been applied for. Um, if we're going to be reviewing these and approving these administratively, sometimes having people object to them, I mean, some people think that, you can do that, I don't know how. You're thinking if you think, you know, you want people to be able to say, no, I don't want this here and that stops it, um, I mean, you can either fight that however you want and.
I feel like that we have, we are here to, you know, to govern, you know, kinda in a sense, I don't think that. The people directly govern, that's why there's boards and commissions and everything, I think that, you know, I wasn't even aware of. The possibility of health risks, so I think it's a great concern, I think, you know. I don't think that we need to ask people if they can build a structure in their backyard or, you know, put input, I think because it's a health risk, we should probably inquire about. Being a.
Add something in there, we can definitely add something in there on a notification process, like Kristen said, some of their communities do that, so we could probably get that language pretty good.
Um, question with, with regards to tonight's commentary, there seems like there was a lot of things that were brought up. Um. I, I, I'm of the stance that in its present format, I'm gonna vote no, but I think it needs to go back to staff per these meeting minutes to. Represent at a later date to planning and zoning. Um. I'm just throwing that out there and I don't know procedurally how we do that.
That's my motion, yeah.
Perfect, I think we're just much. To give you some guidance on that, so if that's what you would want, you could refer back to staff to incorporate all the comments that the commission's made tonight, we will go back, we will watch the recording to make sure that we have covered everything. Um, I've, I've not taken any notes, but again, we've got the video, so we can easily go back and get all that stuff, I've got a lot of stuff in my head, but I'll make sure that we're not missing anything. On there, um, and we can bring kind of a fresh copy of the ordinance back. Um, potentially at your next meeting, I guess we'll have to see how much time that'll take to go through that, but uh, we'll aim for the next meeting, but we'll. If that's the way you guys wanna go.
Appreciate your explanation.
And if there's anything else that you want us to address on this, please let us know in that motion as well too, if it hasn't been discussed already.
Can we send you an email post meeting? Because my brain is rattled right now that I'm sure I'll think of something more.
Sure, um, you can probably do that, we'll just make sure that that email's publicly recorded when we get to the next meeting, just so we're not.
I need to get that stuff, yeah, I'm not gonna send you an email the day before the agenda, so.
More expertise.
So is anybody wanting to make a motion to approve or deny this tonight, or are we looking at referring it back? To come back to it at another meeting, because if we're going to just keep discussing it, we should just refer it back and revisit it.
Here's, here's one thing that I've been thinking of as far as this survey responses, it sounds like. The number of responses that we received was good and on par, but not up to. Some community members' standards as far as feedback and concerns with such a community-wide, you know, effect. Can we require that we bring this back to the table when we have a certain amount of survey. Responses or a percentage of survey responses? I would hate to do that, um, I'll tell you with our housing survey, we, we had a goal on survey responses and we tried and tried and tried and never even came close to it, so. It's, it's just, you can't force people, obviously, to take a survey, we can do everything we can and I'm very confident that we did a really good job of getting the information out there. Obviously, we're not gonna reach everybody, that's impossible, um, but I do feel like we did everything in our humanly power to do whatever we can to get it out there. Other than sending out millions to everybody, we could look at the utility bill, something or another, we'd have to talk to IMU, I don't know how that works or how. Uh, we get that out there, or if they'd even be willing to do it, I don't know, so. Um, but yeah, I, I'd hate to have kind of a, you can have a goal and if we don't meet that goal, like, not say that we can't bring it forward, but. Um, you know, we can maybe keep it open a little bit longer and see what we get, but again, I will also tell you that. You know, what was it, within the first twenty-four hours, we had almost seven hundred responses and we had a thousand responses in the next two weeks, so. Just know that it's gonna be slow from here on out, I mean, even if, if we did another push, if we got the information out there, it's, it's still gonna be a slow trickle-in.
If it's still digital, it's not gonna change.
It was just a line of thought that I.
We made that posting about. A hundred cents, that was last. So it's really slowed down.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, if I may. I assume this proposed ordinance. Is an amalgam. You didn't create this from scratch, you got this by looking at all of the, some of these other cities and stealing the best and.
I can, I can tell you what we started out with and then we massaged it with the survey responses that came in.
Okay. So. These, an ordinance like this has been working in Ankeny, Carlisle, Norwalk, Urbandale, and Waikiki. Right?
Just adopted, I don't know how well they've been working, but they've been adopted.
And are, do you remember or happen to know how old any of those are? All those, I know Carlisle's recent, but are the others recent?
Not off the top of my head, but um, I know a lot of them are recent, again, the oldest one I can think of is from two thousand and twelve. I don't know off the top of my head.
Is that, you know?
No, I can look at my notes, but not off the top of my head.
You gotta get some more refined information on that too.
I'm just curious if, if this is an amalgam of theirs, where you took what I hope is the best of theirs. Then I'm not so sure, it needs a lot of massage.
And, and to be quite honest, I mean, I, that, that's what any ordinance is, it's typically kind of a, it, it's a grouping of best practices. Other cities and stuff like that, I mean. Any ordinance that you read, it's gonna be a lot of the same city to city and then there's a few things here and there that just are changed and made different for individual cities.
I would say, I would say that we've been in this position before where we've discussed something over and over and over and. In the sake of not wanting to do it again, we've moved forward, I think, however, in this one. I would like to make a motion to take under advisement all the different things that we have brought up, I think that it is among. Whatever that word was, I think you did say all the things are good, but I think there's been enough things said and brought to attention. Uh, it needs to be a little farther, so I would make a motion to, you know, review what we have, send it back to staff and then bring those revisions back. Again, to the board to. At that point, make an educated decision.
Okay.
Thank you, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Courtney Marmen.
Yes.
Sarah Ritchie.
Yes.
Al Ferris.
No.
Terry Wordeman.
Yes.
Dave Weiss.
Yes.
Justin Nate. Rich Piper.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, we're gonna move on to item eight A, building permit report.
I'll just give a few quick parts and I wanna, just while everybody's still here, so what we will do is we will continue to communicate out kind of the next steps on this, so. Let us kind of debrief tomorrow, we'll uh take a look at everything again and then we're gonna aim the next planning and zoning commission meeting, which will be July the ninth. Um, and if we want to hit that one for sure, the twenty-third, so. Um, the other building permit, again, we're, we're minimal, so we don't have too much report on that, again, I think we've been pretty steady on permitting and value. Um, and then as far as current projects going on, um, we are still reviewing a few of the bigger ones. Uh, obviously, we've broken ground on a few ones recently with Emerald Bay and Kentucky Ridge, um, so they're starting some of those dirtworks and those underground. Uh, um, infrastructure that's going in on them, so the things coming our way, I would imagine, future on all of those, but just good to see those ones. Any questions from us?
Thank you for all your work on this, clearly it was a lot of.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of credit to Kristen on this as well, like I said, it's, it was good, it was a great, a great, she put an intern on and she's done a fabulous job with that, so.
You're not gonna leave us with a stream on this, are you?
Anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Sure, I have made a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Parting gift to you or to me, I will try to get it.